Good evening, welcome to the City of Everett Meeting of the Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, July 7, 2020. We will begin with a roll call. Kathy, please.
Cherry Yanisak?
Here.
Commissioner Finch?
Here.
Commissioner Testo? Commissioner La- Commissioner Labra? Commissioner Zalinski?
Here.
Commissioner McGinn?
Here.
Commissioner Beck? Commissioner Holland? Commissioner Lark? That ends roll call.
Thank you. I believe, is that enough? Did we have a quorum?
Yeah, the-
Okay, perfect. Well, welcome, everybody. I have some instructions I'm going to read to kind of talk about the situation, about our meeting tonight being, continuing to be unusual due to current events. The situation that we are currently dealing with is constantly changing. As part of the Governor's Safe Start Proclamation, the Planning Commission is conducting our meeting remotely. Unfortunately, we are not able to allow members of the community to gather in person to attend. We want to protect you and your families and recognize the need for social distancing. We encourage you to provide comments or concerns on any matter via email at planning@everettwa.gov. You may also watch the meetings on Comcast Channel 21, or Frontier Channel 29, or online at www.everettwa.gov/everettchannelstream, one word. You may also listen in telephonically if you do not have digital access. Please call 1-425-616-3920, and enter conference ID 938-293-647-POUND. The public is allowed to participate via the same call-in number and conference ID. If you are accessing this meeting via phone, please be aware that there is about a 10-second delay on the broadcast and the stream. If you wish to download the presentation materials, or wish to comment and need to see the visual in real time, please visit everettwa.gov/PlanningCommission. I would like to remind anyone participating to please mute your phone or microphone. On the phone, you can do that by pressing *6 until you are called upon. When it is time for public input, the last four digits of your phone number will be called on, and you will be asked if you wish to, or you will be asked if you wish to speak. *6 toggles the mute function of your phone. Please make sure when you are called upon that you state your name and address as introduction. And then, once finished, please mute yourself again. If there are any disruptions or interruptions during the meeting, we do have an ability to silence people and could remove people from the meeting if that is necessary after a warning. Thank you for your patience and understanding. We know these are challenging times, and we appreciate your willingness to be transparent, to continue to reach out to our community, and to keep everyone informed as we navigate through this time. At this point, I'd like to ask if commissioners have had an opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting, and if anybody has any comments or suggested changes. Do we have a motion to approve?
This is Commissioner Zalinski, and I would move approval of the June 16 minutes.
Do we have a second?
This is Michael Finch. I second the motion.
Let's have a vote. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, I hope I'm catching everybody here. So let's start with Commissioner Finch.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
And Cherry Yanisak?
Yes.
Am I missing anybody? It looks like it's it.
Perfect. All right. Do any commission members have anything to report? Perhaps we could, well, let me put it that way. Does anybody have any, any commissioners have any reports, or anything they'd like to say before we start? Okay, I will take that as a no today. At that, at this point, then, let's move on to staff comments. David, would you like to begin?
Sure. Just a little bit of an update. Just, everyone knows that Alan Giffen has retired as of the 1st of July, and so we're, we're down that position. And so right now, I'm acting as in his stead until they work on a replacement. But otherwise, and then also Dave Tyler retired at the end of the month as well. So we're, we're down two staff people in our division, and still trying to keep the lights on.
All right. With that, I guess we can go ahead into our sole agenda item, talk about rethink zoning. And just to give everybody a heads up, there are about, I think about nine different kind of subtopics within, within this tonight. I think the way we're going to present is David's going to speak on each one of them, and after he speaks about each of these subtopics, we will open it up for comments or questions from the commissioners. And then we will go on to the next subject after that, and we'll proceed in that way. There will be an opportunity for public comments at the conclusion of all of the presentations. And I'll provide some additional instructions to people who are on the line who want to speak at that time. So with that, David, let's go ahead and begin with rethink zoning.
Yeah, and it looks like Commissioner Member Beck has her hand raised, so perhaps she has something before we start.
Thank you, David. Actually, as you're going through your presentation, David, do you mind specifically highlighting the land use changes? I know in my neighborhood, the Port Gardner neighborhood, is a bit concerned that there's actually rezones happening. And if you could specifically identify, I know you've gone over this a number of times, but if you could just kind of summarize what those changes are.
Okay.
Sorry, I know you've done this, but I just want to make sure people are clear as to what is actually being proposed.
All right, we'll, we'll do what we can here. So just for tonight, we have several topics, as the chair talked about, rethink. So the briefings we're going to cover. So there's several new chapters, including Chapter 2, that specifically has to do with some contract rezones, Chapter 4, definitions, Chapter 34, off-street parking, and Chapter 35, landscaping. At the same time, we're revisiting some other conversations that we've had already, including the land use designation map amendments. Chapter 5 for uses, Chapter 6, lots setbacks and densities, Chapter 8, residential standards, and then Chapter 12 for building form and design. As Cherry Yanisak mentioned, is that we go through each one of these, have like one or two slides on each. We'll, we'll stop and see if there's any specific questions from Planning Commission members, or any input that you'd like to provide at this time. So the first is land use map amendments. As you might recall, back in January or February, we presented you with a list of over 20 different changes in land use, not in zoning, as Commissioner Beck just talked about, but changes in, in land use. Where we changed the underlying land use of the property from, from multifamily to resident, multifamily to single-family, or vice versa, or single-family to multifamily. And so those land use changes are there. Most of them are all about existing conditions, but we identified, someone's on the line right now that getting some feedback. Mute mics. Thank you. So there was two in the list that we had that, going back and revisiting those, that we found really went beyond the scope of, of what we were trying to do with rethink zoning. And so the first was in the Riverside neighborhood, just north of Everett Avenue, between Pine and Fulton Streets. We have two church properties that have split zoning. They have multifamily zoning along Everett Avenue, and on the backside of the property, they have single-family zoning. And so we had proposed to change that originally from single-family to multifamily. And as we started looking at that more, we realized that with that change, there would be a lot more development that would be potential on the property, more uses, potentially taller buildings on the site. And we felt that that was out of the scope of what we're trying to do with rethink, because it didn't really reflect existing conditions, but potentially change down the road. And so with this situation, we, we think that this probably has merit as a consideration in the future, but the application needs to come from the property owners and go through the docket process. The second was in the Norton Grand neighborhood, and we had looked at some of the areas of the historic overlay that have been zoned for multifamily use for probably 30 years in there, to change the land use designation from multifamily to single-family. And when we did that, at the same time, we had a transit overlay in place along Rucker because of the swift stops. And that transit overlay provided basically the same heights that would be, that were allowed previously in that multifamily zone as, as they would be in that transit overlay. Similarly, in the transit overlay, we allowed different housing types as part of the infill options that we're looking at, up to fourplexes within the single-family zone that would be adjacent to the transit quarters. But when we backed away from all of that, all those changes in the single-family zones, we took away the heights, and we took away the land use changes in, in that. And as a result, this whole neighborhood would have resulted in a reduced heights from what they're allowed right now by 10 feet, and reduced the uses that were allowed in that neighborhood, quite significantly from multifamily to single-family use. And so that is not anything that, that we had as part of our scope of things. And so that is something that both of these, the city is not sponsoring these applications at this time. So with that, that's one of the break points. If there's any questions specifically on this, then I'll be glad to try to answer them.
It looks like Commissioner Finch has a question?
I do. David, did you receive any feedback on either of the previous proposals from residents or, or stakeholders?
No, we have not received anything from, the conversation in the Norton Grand neighborhood has been going on for several years. And, and I think that when we had the proposal that basically had the same heights as what's existing, and, and a range of some multifamily infill within there, I think that had good potential to fit. But now it just would result in a very significant downzone beyond what we had for the scope.
Was there, was there previous support for the, the multifamily zoning in this area? Or, because it strikes me that, that where you're headed with the previously proposed zoning was reflective of the current land use, which is the same reason why you decided to move away from the proposal for Riverside.
It, yeah, but again, you know, we're, we would go from 38-foot-tall buildings allowed by Wright right now, down to 28-foot-tall buildings in the proposal that's before us. And so those types of changes are really beyond what we're, what we're doing with rethink and moving, trying to consolidate things. And so that's really the reason. I, I think it has merit, but I think it gets back to the conversation about single-family zones, and what they are in the future, and, and that could be part of the topics to take on next year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions, comments? Okay, David, you want to go ahead and proceed to the next topic?
Yeah, so the next is Chapter 2, and for almost the entire chapter, most of this is, you know, background boring stuff. But there's, there's a section that, at the end, that is of interest for, for people and, and for the public, but largely for the staff. So we have contract rezones, and really what they are is agreements between the property owners and the city. It allows the development of that property, subject to restrictions that are not applicable to other parts of the zone. So let's say someone got a rezon to urban mixed, but then they had a contract rezon on top of it. The contract may limit the, the number, the uses that are allowed on the property, or the height of the property. And so those are site-specific contract agreements, and the city has them going back to 1976. And so we have a long history of, of these, well before the, the current vintage of our zoning code in 1989, before the Growth Management Act was passed in 1990. And then change in, in state law in 1995, because for a long time, contract rezones were actually not formally recognized in state law as, as a legal tool. And I think it goes back to the 1960s, where the courts finally said that that's something that jurisdictions can do. But in 1995, they, they finally put some things in legislation, and they're called development agreements. There's other forms of contracts that we have, including planned residential developments, planned developments, master plans, and institutional overlays. And the challenges that, that we really have as a staff, first off, is, is when I first got to the city, actually, all the contract rezones were, there's one cardboard box down at the permit center office on Cedar Street, and one contract rezon box up at the municipal building at Wall Street. And they had paper files in there, and that was it. So when staff had to find projects or answer questions about what people could do with the property, they could look up on a zoning map, but then they'd have to look at a separate map and see whether or not that was on the list of contract rezones. And then go find the cardboard box that had that contract rezon in it. And so we've progressed quite a bit in the last couple of years. We were able to actually map these out and get digital files of things, and, and things have really progressed quite, quite well. But there's, I think, well over 60 of them that really are no longer needed, in our opinion, and largely because the properties are already developed, and, and so there's no need for the contract. And the second is that the current draft zoning addressed the standards that the contract covered. And so in many cases, these old agreements were before kind of the current vintage of zoning that required landscape improvements and sign standards, things like that, protection of critical areas, wetlands. And so we've gone through those, and actually, when I say we, Alan Giffen and Steve Inglesby, and Steve is on the line tonight, who's our manager of our land use office. And so he has a, he, he has the, the history of analogies, our institutional memory now here of all these contract rezones. And so those are the ones that we've, we've talked about repealing, and several of them that we're talking about keeping. So the contracts to be repealed are shown in Chapter 2, and so we identify what it is, and the ordinance or the resolution that would be repealed. If you go to our zoning library, you can get a map book that our GIS person put together for each one of these. And so this is one of the rezones with the conditions for repeal. We also have a separate report about those that we'd still be retaining. What we've done is we've mapped out every one of these. We have a little summary of what the conditions were. And in the, the actual version that's online, you can go to the, the link that we have gotten to go to the ordinance to find the full file that's available for the ordinance or the resolution for that. So we have kind of a nice way of finding every one of these and going through those. But again, the, the list of all of them are in Chapter 2 for contract rezones. And I'm going to stop there. And again, if anyone has already had the chance to look at some of these, and have any questions, I could certainly go out to those. And Steve can probably answer a question. And it looks like we have a couple commissioners with their hands up. So we've got Michael Finch, and I think Commissioner Beck both had their hands up.
I didn't have a question as much as a, as a thank you. I really appreciated how you organized this information to make it easy to understand and review. So I had no issues with what, what's being proposed, but I just wanted to say thanks for facilitating my review.
Well, we had some very good staff working on it. We had a kind of a new staff person that did a lot of compiling of things and spreadsheets, and getting all the links put together. And then our GIS person is just a whiz-bang of putting these, these nice, nice things together to, to make it presentable.
Any other commissioners with a question or comment?
Yes, and this is more curiosities. David, did you notice the property owners of these proposals to repeal? I mean, directly notice them?
Great question. We just compiled that list of all the property owners, and we are going to provide notice to them before we get to the public hearing process.
Great, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions or comments?
So again, in the ordinance is the repeals, but also on the website, you see what also is being retained. There's, there's 20-some that are still being retained, the planned residential developments and planned developments, institutional overlays, things like that, where we really think that the current conditions or standards don't provide the protection the community wants. And so we, we still have a fairly large set of them left to administer. All right, so if there's no other questions, I'll move on. Chapter 4 for definitions. Really, what this chapter is, is a reorganization in, in large measure. Most definitions remain unchanged. A couple that have been revised, existing ones, and we, we talked about this, I think, going back into December, when we talked about heights. You got some input from Mr. Koenig about base elevation, and so there is a change, basically, I think it's about filling of the property, so that change is there. We made some changes in the definition of porch, just some slight changes as part of that. All the use definitions are categorized in their own place, and so there's, there's fewer use definitions, but want to call out a few that are changes from current practice. First off, the definitions of clinic and office, they're kind of mirror images of each other. What we have taken out of the definition of clinic is dentist, psychiatrist, chiropractors, and physical therapists. For those Planning Commission members and members of the public that recall, we had a lot of conversation a couple of years ago about clinics on the ground floor in downtown Everett. And as a result of that, we had a prohibition against clinics, or even people reoccupying those space. When we did that, it also brought in chiropractors and physical therapists, because they're part of the definition. We really don't think those are kind of the same thing as the medical side of things. And so what we've done is take, taken them out of the definition of clinic and included them in the definition of office. And so that's a change there. Second change is multiple-family dwellings. Currently, we define a multiple-family dwelling as three, three or more units. And in this code, we have drafted it as five or more units. So when we refer to multiple-family dwelling, we start at five, and that goes back to how we've organized some of the chapters, with Chapter 8 being residential standards that are, most of them are, the townhouses are applicable to the single-family zones, or four units or less. And Chapter 9 is the multifamily standards, and so that applies to whether it's five units or more. We made some changes in the definition of accessory dwelling unit. The 2020 legislature made some changes in this in the Growth Management Act. No longer is it just accessory to a single-family unit, but now, under state law, accessory dwelling unit can be accessory to a duplex, or a triplex, or other housing unit. And so it just kind of baffles me at times how, you know, an accessory to a duplex is, isn't that a triplex? But anyhow, we've, that's what the legislature did, so we had to amend our definitions to be consistent with the Growth Management Act. And in Chapter 8, we have some standards that allow for these ADUs for, for the duplex and triplex and, in those situations. But they, they don't get as large a unit as you would in a single-family. Another thing that kind of came up as we started looking at some issues was microhousing. As we consolidate the multifamily zones, we do have microhousing as allowed, and it has less parking requirements. And when we started looking at that, we're, we started to be concerned that someone could claim that their four-unit project is a microhousing. And really, this really has to do with a larger project with, with larger units being developed. And so we defined the microhousing and picked a number at 24 to qualify as microhousing. Anything less than that would be just a multifamily housing project. Group housing, we have three new definitions for group housing. The classification system that was in there is from, I think, the early 1990s or the 1980s, is no longer based on state law. And so we have a new tiering system, and that's, that's tied into what we have in Chapter 5 for uses. And so it has to do with how many people are, are in the group housing. So we have group housing one of being one to six people, tier two would be seven to 16, and then tier three would be greater than 16 people. So we just have new definitions that are there. The final use definition change from current practice is regarding temporary shelter. And the, again, the 2020 legislature added some requirements that provided exemptions for religious facilities for temporary shelter, homeless encampments, safe parking areas, things like that, that religious facilities could facilitate. And so we've made some changes to the definition to be consistent with the 2020 legislature. And finally, the last one is, we have a section on historic resource definitions, and, and really, a lot of them are being pulled out of other sections of code and just being put in, into that, that chapter. But the one that was actually missing that's really critical is what is a contributing structure? And contributing structure in the historic parlance is, is one that contributes to the historic character of the community, that the, the building's architecture and its features contribute. It may not have necessarily outstanding characteristics of a significant building, but it still has the vernacular, the architecture of that period, and contributes to the character of that neighborhood. And so we use a definition- to the character of that neighborhood and so uh, we use a definition from the National Park Service for contributing structure and, and drop that uh, into the code. So with that, I think that, yeah, that was, that was it on definitions, so.
Do any commissioners have a question or comment? Uh, Commissioner Finch, I see is a raised hand.
Yeah, the question is uh, that I have is about the definition of clinic. Um, has this revised definition been run by any retail uh, brokers or owners? Um, I just wanna make sure that we are um, catching uh, kind of the correct, the correct group of folks as it relates to um, what is and what isn't a clinic.
Uh, it has not been run by anybody yet. Um, uh, so that's a, that's a good, good point.
I had a question about that as well. This is Commissioner Laubra.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I couldn't see on here, I'll raise my hand, I apologize. Um, yeah, I don't, I'm just looking at this, I didn't look at it when I read these, but now I'm looking at that particular definition and it says, it says, it defines what a clinic is and then the last sentence is, "This definition does not include facilities providing patient beds for overnight care." Dentists, psychiatrists, chiropractors, or physical therapists. Well, the whole thing is a little bit mind-twisting to me because those people do provide medical or surgical or therapeutic services and then why would you eliminate clinics but then allow facilities with beds for overnight care? I, I just don't understand that at all.
Um, okay, so I'm gonna um, see if I can find that here.
It's on page fourteen.
Yeah, so this is a um... So is it part of the, so we had the exemption for dentist, psychiatrist, chiropractors, or physical therapists is really more the concern about the patient beds for overnight care?
Well, that seems really inconsistent with the whole thing. And then I really do think those other specialties do provide medical, surgical, and therapeutic services, so I'm a little confused about that too.
Uh, yeah, they, they, they do and I guess what we're trying to uh, distinguish is to pull some of these out that, that are not part of that definition of clinic because of the issues that we have with clinics in our retail streets. Um, uh, we've had several of these uh, situations already where uh, uh, these offices just uh, I mean, they, they really are run more like offices and then they are uh, the, the traditional clinic without patient care and things like that, but I think that I need to look back at the original definition of clinic because I think the issue about uh, providing patient beds, I think that uh, came from the existing and that is kind of incongruous uh, with the rest of it, so we can look at that and, and look at trying to uh, clean some of that up.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions or comments?
Uh, yes, this is Commissioner Zalinski. I also tried to raise my hand, I don't know if it showed anywhere or not, but uh, I have a question besides more on the clinic question, on the, a couple of the residential definitions. You, there's a definition in the section on the residential use definitions for dwelling column two units and I know with, that the term duplex appears in our code and there's a section on it which has a definition for duplex, but I'm wondering, A, why the definition for dwelling two units doesn't have in parentheses or something duplex, cause to me, they're the same. And uh, the other question is why town, why the townhouse definition isn't also within this section rather than in the section of code that deals with the regulations on townhouses?
Yeah, so uh, currently uh, the definition of duplexes uh, in the code and um, what we've been trying to do is, is try to find all the situations and, and get consistent uh, with things because we had uh, two-unit townhouses, um, and so a duplex can be either up and down or, or it could be vertical or horizontal, either way, whereas a townhouse is uh, horizontal. And so we're trying to get away from, you know, the, the issue of a two-unit townhouse versus a two-unit duplex and just call it a two-unit dwelling and we probably still have some uh, additional cleanup to, to deal with making that uh, consistent, so you probably have found some of those and, and we need to go back through and uh, try to be consistent on that, but we're, as much as possible, we're trying to go to, you know, two-unit dwelling, but also use some of the common language that people are familiar with, cause you know, for duplex and townhouse, so my preference would be is to put uh, duplex kind of in parentheses and so that people understand when we're talking about two-unit dwelling, well, that's a duplex.
Yeah, I, I agree that, that, with that idea. Um, and what about the townhouse definition? Why, why not put that in the central definitions area? Because I was looking for it in there originally and was surprised I didn't see it, but then I later found it in the uh, in the subsequent codes, which in the, talked about townhouse regulations.
Okay, yeah, we can uh, um, it's a good catch, so we'll uh, we'll look at that and try to get that uh, into the definitions.
David, this is Commissioner Yanisak. I guess I wanted to go back to the topic of breaking out the definitions of clinic and office. Um, I agree that I think there is some, it is a little confusing to try to pin down just exactly what, when, when you read the language, there does seem to be some overlap there. One thing that strikes me is within the definition of clinic, um, you, we, you, the, the language here uses the word office, um, which is then, the word office is then defined below to include dentists and psychiatrists and chiropractors, but when office is used in clinic, it specifically does not include dentist, psychiatrist, or chiropractors. But in my mind, perhaps if you take a look at that language, maybe changing, not using the words clinic and office, maybe a different term for those because, again, using the word office within the definition of clinic to mean something different than office is later defined to include, I think adds to the confusion. If that makes sense.
Yeah, uh, we're just uh, yeah, I'll, I'll see what we can do. It, it's, it's linked into a couple of different chapters, so we have to um, be cognizant of that, uh, when you look at chapter five for uses and then chapter thirty-four for off-street parking, some of that is all linked together, so when we make a change in one section, it may affect the others, but uh, we can take a look at that and uh, try to make some clarifying things there.
Any other commissioner questions or comments at this time? Alright, David, I think we can move on.
Alright, well, that was a good one. Alright, so chapter thirty-four, off-street uh, parking, um, so this is a chapter that are having some amendments and so this isn't uh, repeal and replace. Uh, again, there were some new Growth Management Act requirements uh, tied to uh, parking. Three of them, uh, one was housing for very low income or extremely low income, then there's uh, housing for seniors or peoples with disabilities and then accessory dwelling units. Uh, our existing code dealt with two of those and the, the one that's highlighted in yellow, uh, the housing for seniors or peoples with, with disabilities um, was not covered in our code and so the amendment uh, covers that part, but the other two um, are taken care of. Um, we also, uh, like I just mentioned about the definition of clinic, uh, what we've done is uh, kind of resynced the uh, off-street parking uh, land uses uh, in, in the parking chapter to match up with chapter five and so some of those changes like uh, group housing, uh, for example, had to be synced up with uh, how we're doing chapter five now uh, in there and so some changes were done there. Uh, next is uh, there was some clarification was needing, needed about access to transit and so we've, we've added some, a couple words for clarification there and when we moved a lot of stuff out of the land division chapter, the use of the common area parking uh, had to be added back into uh, this chapter uh, as part of the clarifications. And then finally, uh, some clarification about tandem parking uh, was added, that uh, we do allow tandem parking uh, to have uh, two cars basically stacked uh, in certain situations uh, to meet the required parking, uh, and uh, and so we've added some clarification and some uh, sketches of how that should be depicted, so with that, I think I'm done with parking.
Well, that was fast. Any commissioner questions or comments on this topic?
Yes, I guess so.
Mr. Laubra, go ahead.
Okay, um, well, uh, David, um, I was a little confused on the daycare family home and adult family home. Uh, I guess after a while, it kind of sunk in that the two parking spaces per dwelling unit was, is a little confusing in that context and I guess the assumption is that somebody has a home and then they're renting rooms to adults needing daycare or having a daycare for children. So I guess what, is this what it's saying? If that's someone's home that has a business in their home, they get two parking spots and then if they have an employee or employees, one spot per employee, is that the assumption?
Yeah, so like a family daycare home is um, is adults that are living, uh, renting a room, they're state licensed facilities, uh, elderly folks that need some level of care uh, in that, so it's just a, still one dwelling unit, but there's, there's people that are unrelated that are living uh, in that and so um, what we've seen a lot is that there isn't a need for a lot of parking other than for the staff and the people that are, that are there as a regular, regular unit.
I, I agree, I wouldn't expect them to need a parking spot, but um, you know, it was the, it was the confusion when you have different people living there and what, what's the dwelling unit?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it was a little confusing, but I think I understand it. I, I hope other people do. And then on cottage housing back in the, in the chapter on page two, um, there's no minimum parking required, is that, it's blank, so I wasn't sure what that meant.
Uh, okay. Um, no, cottage, cottage housing, um, would be uh, two per dwelling unit, so it, it's everything that's in that column to the right would have to meet the cottage housing requirement, so there'd be...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, the, the copy I have doesn't have anything on the right.
Alright, so I'm looking at a chapter, uh, one of my, working from home, I, some of these PDFs have converted, uh, and they took all the track changes off, um, so I think that you got a version that didn't have track changes on it and so let me check the...
It's fine, if it's just a typo, let's move on.
Okay. At the top of page two, are you looking at?
Yes, yeah. There's a, there's a cell that says cottage housing and then the cell to the right is blank.
Uh, okay, uh, you're not seeing what I'm seeing, so that, that concerns me, so uh, I'd be curious about that, so.
Yeah, David, that, that's how my, that's how my paperwork appears as well, there's a blank space there, so that might just be a, something got left out in the printing.
Okay. Take a look at that.
Any other commissioner questions or comments? Okay, I think we can move on.
Alright, for chapter thirty-five landscaping, really what this is, is just uh, the consolidation of zones and so um, what we've done is uh, just uh, added the consolidation, um, changed the citations to the zones. Uh, there was also some standards that were in the land division chapter uh, previously about how to landscape uh, in land divisions and so those standards are moved into this chapter. And then finally, uh, street tree vaults uh, uh, that were in the Broadway mixed-use and the E-one, uh, Evergreen Way mixed-use overlay, uh, those standards uh, uh, because those chapters are being repealed and so the street, street tree vaults uh, replace uh, what those standards uh, would be in there. Uh, chapter thirty-five is a chapter that we're really hoping to do a lot more amendments, there's been a lot of uh, challenges with uh, implementation of that, but uh, just ran out of uh, time uh, for that, so this is a chapter of continued interest from staff to do some things and uh, again, I know that Steve Inglesby is, is on the line and uh, he's been administering this for uh, quite a while, so if there's any detailed questions about uh, chapter thirty-five, Steve's also available to help answer those.
Any questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, and I will remind anybody from the public who's listening that there will be an opportunity for you to ask questions or make comments at the end of all the presentations, so please just uh, be patient. Uh, there's no other questions then, I guess, David, we can continue.
Okay, um, so now we're gonna go back on uh, some of the chapters that we've already uh, done and uh, some, some changes that we've made in here. Uh, so in chapter five for uses, uh, in the residential section, we've eliminated the option to have three to four units in the single-family zone, so the RS, R1, and R2 zones. Uh, when we're first looking at the existing zoning standards, uh, it's very odd where it doesn't allow multi-family development and again, multi-family currently is defined as three or more units, uh, but did allow uh, attached housing through a cluster housing provision. So when we first uh, uh, did the strategy of keeping the single-family zones, originally we had the, the three to four units, but it started to not make sense and not really with the intent of those single-family zones and so we, we've dropped those um, out of the equation in the RS, R1, and R2 zones. Again, a lot of this conversation about uh, housing types and single-family zones uh, would be something that uh, has been drafted and would be on the table for discussion uh, in the next uh, year or so. Mentioned already, uh, two thousand twenty legislation on homeless encampments, uh, religious facilities sponsor and so a little bit of uh, changes in uh, definitions and, and terms that are used uh, in chapter five in the uses as well as uh, in the definitions and, and later when we talk about chapter eight uh, for residential standards. Next is uh, for some reason, kind of missed that uh, the commercial daycare centers, uh, right now, they are allowed um, through a conditional or, yeah, public hearing process in all single-family zones and we did not carry that over and so just started looking at uh, the existing standards, uh, that was one that was, was missed, was, was blank across all those and so we put the commercial daycare centers back into the single-family zones and would require a public hearing and notice uh, on that. And then uh, our uh, attached housing, the R2A zone, we inadvertently didn't uh, allow uh, quite a few different uses uh, within two different tables, uh, so uh, must have gotten uh, uh, the end of the day and uh, didn't finish that work, uh, cause we got through the, the earlier chapters, but all of a sudden, the R2A was uh, missing any kind of uh, permitted uses uh, or administrative uses in uh, two of the categories and so we've uh, added those back in to be consistent with what the current zoning allows within those R2A zones. So those are uh, it for the uses and the changes that we have in the tables right now.
Any commissioner questions or comments?
Michael Finch has his hand up.
I do.
Go.
So David, the cover memo is helpful, but could you circulate a red line showing the changes to this chapter? This is one I think we reviewed in, in um, in much detail at a previous meeting and it would be helpful for me to track the changes that have been made. And it would be helpful for me to track the changes that have been made.
Yeah, I could. And uh, again, I'm working on a version of software. When I exported it, it uh, for some reason it exports and it takes all the changes right off. And uh, but I've uh, upgraded my software on my personal computer and I, I can uh, uh, I can do it so you can see the changes now.
Great, thanks.
Any other commissioner questions or comments? David, I guess I do have a question. This is Commissioner Yanisak. Um, by eliminating options for three to four units in the RS, R1, R2 zone, and then also in chapter four, changing the definition of multifamily to only be five or more um, units. I, 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 I guess haven't looked at it closely enough, but it seems to me that kind of leaves a gap then between in that three or four unit, I mean, where does that practically speaking, where does that leave a three to four unit um, project potentially?
Uh, so they, in single family zones, they're not there in large measure. Um, you could do it through a planned development overlay, through clustering development or um, things like that. But otherwise, the three to four units would be in your multifamily zones.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And again, you know, I think that's one of the things that we were hoping to address and having some more housing types and single family zones. But uh, that's just uh, been put on the uh, uh, back burner for this year.
Got it. Any other questions or comments before we move on? Okay, I think we can go to the next topic, David.
The next topic is chapter six. Uh, Dave Tyler had uh, briefed you already on the lots and setbacks. Really, the, the change here is just in the densities. Uh, originally, we're gonna write a chapter that was gonna have densities as a standalone chapter. Uh, but started looking at this and chapter six, it, it made sense to drop it into there. So we've added the residential densities uh, into this chapter. Uh, for this, the maximum multifamily densities apply uh, only in a couple situations. Neighborhood business zone or in uh, zones, uh, multifamily zones where there's a historic overlay. Otherwise, there's no maximum density. Um, and uh, and density is limited in other ways. Uh, find that uh, the most limiting factor for how many units is how, how tall a building can be, what the setbacks are, uh, how much parking they can uh, provide and the open space that they have to provide for every unit. And so uh, we find that uh, that is kind of a performance-based uh, approach uh, to zoning to, to deal with the building in the form there rather than uh, density limits. For single family density, it's the same as the current code. And so it, it's largely uh, just, it's lot size uh, is, is the density. So in the RS zone, it's one per nine thousand and that's, that's the density that, that you'd be allowed. So, so densities is just added to this chapter. Uh, maximum multifamily densities, just as background and the summary documents talk about this. Uh, currently, we don't have any maximum density in any of our urban residential zones or R5 zones or the uh, urban mixed zones. Uh, the Evergreen Way, uh, Broadway, none of those have maximum density requirements. The only zones that do have maximum density uh, right now are the R3 and I believe the R4 zone.
David, this is Michael Finch. I have a question. And moving away from the density limitations to more of a performance-based evaluation, um, what's the net impact or what's the expected net impact on the uh, individual sites? Has anybody looked at how the two compare?
Every time we've looked at density, uh, uh, for things that have been built in the last fifteen years within Everett, no one's actually built to the maximum densities. The, the limits have always been the building heights, uh, in some cases, the FAR uh, requirements, um, off-street parking, things like that. So no one's ever achieved those. So I, so I think the impact is, is, is none. Uh, people uh, typically are building to um, what the footprint can allow and what the market can allow. And, and uh, it's not the, the density side that, that dictates that.
Great. That's what I was expecting. Thanks.
Any other commissioner questions or comments? Okay, go ahead, David.
All right. Getting towards the end here. So chapter eight, residential standards. Again, uh, the two thousand twenty legislature, uh, homeless encampments. Uh, so there's some, some changes in there, uh, just to uh, be consistent with, with that. Um, uh, legislative requirements there. Um, the uh, just a little bit of background uh, for those folks. And I know I got uh, one question from a planning commissioner uh, earlier today. Uh, apparently there's um, not apparently, but there, uh, there was a homeless encampment that uh, got established at the county courthouse and then it apparently moved to another location. Uh, homeless encampments are currently regulated in the city. Um, and it requires a nonprofit or a religious facility to sponsor that. And there are specific standards to establish that, including some setbacks and other requirements uh, that are in the code. And, and uh, we're not making any changes in this draft uh, other than uh, again, the religious facilities have a little bit more ability to do this uh, uh, anywhere really within the city if they're, they're the sponsors. Uh, they, they have the ability to propose it, uh, but it still has to go through a, a process to, to meet the standards and, and notice and things like that. And uh, so the one that's uh, the, both of them that have been established recently in Everett, neither one of them went through this process. And uh, so neither one of them were sanctioned by the city. So. Second is, kind of want to talk about uh, accessory buildings. Um, so there's uh, there's been some challenges and uh, probably gonna even have some additional language to amend to uh, provide to you. But uh, we've had uh, quite a bit of challenge on accessory buildings and, and how to determine the size of them. Uh, and one of the questions that came up with our land use staff the other day are porches and accessory building. Uh, my reading of the code is the answer is no. Uh, however, they've often implemented it in, in that way where uh, where there's limits on how much uh, square footage of accessory building can be built. Uh, they've added up the porches as, as part of that. And uh, to me, um, that's, that wasn't uh, proper, um, particularly when we actually require porches in a lot of situations. Um, so it's not really an accessory building. But uh, whenever you have practices that are uh, well ingrained, uh, it's best to try to write a code to uh, be specific so people uh, can point to it uh, as part of that. So we've uh, done some things to uh, clarify that hopefully regarding porches. The other thing that came up is that quite often when they're looking at the limits for accessory buildings, uh, perhaps someone uh, built their garage and they've already met the maximum of how much uh, they can have uh, on their property, uh, fifteen percent of the lot area. Uh, but then they want to uh, add a, a structure for their kid, a playhouse in the backyard. And, and technically it's defined as a structure and does that count? And, and um, so we've added uh, another two hundred square feet of exemptions for these other kind of miscellaneous things like playhouses and dog houses and uh, you know, little uh, buildings for pool accessories, things like that, that uh, could be uh, as part of that. The other thing, uh, kind of want to point out, and this has been in the code. Uh, so we've talked a lot about no changes in single family zones, but one of the areas where there really is some, a little bit of change is in the accessory buildings and how we uh, have size of accessory buildings and, and accessory dwelling units and height. And this has been a real challenge for staff to administer. And so we have a lot of uh, words here. Uh, so apologize for that. Uh, you got the PDF version of this is on our website, so people can look at that. But basically, we kind of have these current standards that when you look at accessory building, uh, for example, if you look at height and accessory building being, let's just say it's a garage, you can build a garage at fifteen feet height if you have a six twelve pitch, uh, if it's over two hundred square feet. But if you had, if you did an accessory dwelling unit, you could actually go up to twenty-four feet if on an alley. And so, so someone could come in and that's all they could do is if it's a garage, but if they could do uh, something taller in terms of the same kind of building form uh, that's there. Or you could do eighteen feet, uh, if it's within the rear setback for a non-alley uh, unit on that. Same thing about size, uh, is that uh, for a garage, uh, currently under code, you can go up to fifteen percent of the lot or a thousand square feet. But if you build an accessory dwelling unit, uh, you can only go up to uh, eight hundred square feet. And so we're looking at trying to have ways of having uh, uh, the consistency basically between these, these two similar accessory building forms uh, on a piece of property that uh, would have some same standards in terms of heights. And so, so when we look at heights, uh, single family zones on an alley, uh, twenty-four feet and six twelve pitch, so that's consistent with our current standards uh, that are here. But the same thing for both accessory dwelling unit and accessory building. Uh, so we really are not looking at what's inside uh, that building when we look at height. Uh, it, it's all one of the same there, um, as we consider that uh, for height. And for the size, uh, we, we're looking at the same thing where we do fifteen percent of the lot. Our current standard is one thousand square feet. We are uh, proposing to go up to three thousand square feet. So this would be for very large lots with, with large uh, dwellings. Uh, that would be allowed a, a larger accessory building in that situation. The only difference for accessory dwelling unit is that it would be limited to a thousand square feet so that we don't end up with a accessory uh, dwelling that's at three thousand square feet. So the, so these standards between accessory building, accessory dwelling unit uh, are largely the same uh, uh, except for that size. Mentioned earlier that the change in state law, that now we have accessory dwelling units that are um, that are uh, accessory to duplexes, triplexes and townhomes. And what we've done there is we, we've, we've halved that of rather than seventy-five percent of the gross floor area of the dwelling, we said you can do thirty-seven and a half percent of that uh, with a minimum of four hundred forty square feet. So you can kind of get a, a small unit uh, there, but you're not gonna be able to uh, basically turn a duplex into three equal um, units and call it a triplex in, in that situation. So we got a couple sketches uh, for some things uh, here and apologize. Uh, we do have one architect uh, that's on the commission, so uh, apologize to Commissioner McGinn about uh, my rude uh, sketches here, but uh, they're, they're better than some planners can do. So, um, anyhow, uh, one of the things that we have is, is, is that accessory building or, or accessory dwelling, when, when it's an integral part of the building, it can go to the same height as the building uh, itself. As long as it meets all the setback requirements. And so you can't go into the rear yard. Uh, and you have to have a minimum attachment of ten feet uh, to be part of that. And so someone that has a garage and they have a, a granny flat up on, on top, uh, hopefully with some exit windows uh, in it, um, would be allowed to go to that maximum height. Of course, you have to look at lot coverage, whether or not this meets lot coverage uh, of that zone. Um, I, I, you know, it would have to be determined uh, as well. And so when you look at the accessory building, uh, fifteen percent of the lot area, three thousand square feet or seventy-five percent of the gross floor of the dwelling. And then this, if this was the granny flat, the accessory dwelling unit up on top, uh, that could be no more than a thousand square feet uh, for that. So when we started looking at detached buildings, and so this is a situation where it'd be on an alley, you could go accessory building, uh, height up to two floors or twenty-four feet uh, with the alley and a roof pitch of, of uh, more than six twelve. Uh, if it didn't have that pitch, then it would have to drop down to an eighteen-foot uh, tall building uh, in that situation. And same limits on the size of, of the buildings and uh, fifteen percent of the lot area, three thousand square feet or seventy-five percent of the gross floor area of the dwelling, whichever is less uh, is what would be allowed. And then in this situation, if this was a non-alley uh, lot and they're getting access from the street here, here's a situation where they could go into the backyard um, here, uh, meeting the five-foot minimum um, uh, setback there, but they're limited to eighteen feet uh, in height. And uh, which is uh, what our current standards are for accessory dwelling units and, in rear yards. So with that, I will pause and see if there's any questions on that section.
Any commissioner questions or comments? Looks like there's not, so David, we can go ahead and proceed.
Okay, uh, chapter twelve, building form and design. Uh, what we've done is we've added uh, there are some sections in the uh, M2 zone in chapter nineteen point two-six uh, regarding the central waterfront planning area, some lighting and glare requirements. And when we uh, proposed to repeal this chapter nineteen point two-six, uh, that was uh, lost out of that. We found a few things that uh, didn't get uh, put into other chapters and, and this was one of them. So what we've done is taken the, the same standards that are in twenty-six and dropped them into chapter twelve and it's applicable within the central waterfront uh, planning area. So the former Kimberly-Clark site uh, down there on the waterfront. And that's it for that.
Any questions or comments about chapter twelve? So David, I think that uh, wraps up your presentation tonight. Is that correct? Or anything else from you?
Uh, it is. Just uh, for next steps, uh, we are scheduling our, our final briefing for July twenty-first. Um, so uh, looks like I didn't update this slide, uh, but uh, all, all the code chapters and summaries uh, will, will be getting to you. Um, uh, not all the chapters have had specific briefings uh, to you. And so uh, for those uh, we encourage uh, for the planning commission members and the members of the public to read the summaries first. Uh, we were looking at uh, this Friday, release uh, the chapters and summaries. I'm actually looking at this coming Monday on July thirteenth. And so I'm gonna uh, make sure that uh, we, we take care of uh, the adjustments and, and uh, dot the i's and cross the t's. And so the draft that we get out on July thirteenth uh, will be uh, something that uh, uh, we'll get to the, the planning commission member, so you'll have a hard copy of everything. Um, so Kathy uh, is planning to mail it. If you want to make some uh, uh, different arrangements with Kathy, please send her an email as to how you would like to obtain a hard copy of it. We'll make a hard copy of all the code chapters and plan amendments, but also all the summaries. And so you'll have all that. We'll put it in a three-ring uh, binder book for you um, so that you can have it for the twenty-first and uh, we can walk through any issues or questions uh, that are needed. And, and with my goal is that uh, the, the public hearing uh, scheduled for August eighteenth is that, that uh, what we'll deliver to you uh, after the thirteenth is gonna be what we're taking to hearing. We may have some uh, errata sheets or some amendments that go to hearing uh, based on things that we hear from the public or from you, uh, or internally from staff. Uh, but in large measure, we're trying to make sure that we have versions of all these uh, plan drafts and chapters that are out there that the public can uh, start reading and reviewing and, and commenting on and uh, having uh, well over a month uh, to do that. There are a few things that uh, are, are still coming in from our folks in Public Works. Um, uh, they've asked us to look at some changes with regard to some stormwater recommendations. Uh, need to look at some of that. Uh, there's also uh, where we have development impact fees are currently in title eighteen uh, where, with our land divisions. And so we're probably gonna move that into this title nineteen with Unified Development Code. And so no, no changes in impact fees, but it's just, it's gonna be an ordinance where we amend it and, and move it. And finally, uh, there is a chapter in uh, Public Works Standards for Street and Sidewalks that's kind of a companion to some of what we're doing. And I just got those draft amendments from Public Works today. And so we'll uh, be drafting that and, and getting that uh, out to uh, the planning commission, the public as well to. Um, technically, you don't uh, have the hearings on that stuff, but it, it's a development standard. And so we'll, we'll package it together with, with your stuff so that uh, everyone can see it. So with that, uh, I am done with uh, my briefing.
Thank you very much, David. I guess all that the commissioners, any final parting questions or comments or thoughts? Like Commissioner Finch, maybe?
There is one question that I skipped over, David. Um, going back to chapter nineteen point oh-six, um, on page three of the um, of the summary, at the bottom there, there's a discussion about the MM zone uh, and the setback increasing from twenty to thirty feet. Um, has, have you looked at the overall impacts to the development envelope as a result of the changes to, to this particular zone? as a result of the changes to to this particular zone?
You know, that was a chapter that I know that Dave Tyler was looking at. And and I think part of that is the campus development that's down in Southwest Everett. And so I think the answer is that yes, that he did look at that. But myself personally, I have not, and so I need to take a look at that.
Okay, I think that the the rear setback decreased by five feet, but the front setback increased by ten. So I guess one question is changing the front setback to twenty-five feet, does that equalize the development envelope? And then also, I think that the minimum lot size changed as a result as well. And so I just want to make sure we're not we're not impairing the development of our commercial property as a result of these changes.
Yeah, we we did look at that. With the merging of some of the zones, it ends up that some of the zones, the minimum lot size increased, whereas some zones, the minimum lot size decreased from what current standards are. But we also looked at the patterns of development in those areas of change and consulted with our Economic Development Director with those lot size things. And we found that there wasn't an issue on that end. But I will go back and take a look at the setbacks and and see, make sure that that pattern fits.
Yeah, and I'm specifically thinking about some of these currently MM zone properties that are of an odd configuration, that are something less than two and a half acres or thereabouts. And I'm afraid that the setbacks may diminish the development capacity in locations where we actually want that capacity to occur.
Okay, take a look at that.
Thanks.
Final call for any other commissioners with questions or comments?
Yes, this is Commissioner Zalinski. I'd just like to make a general comment that I think that where staff is going with this code is is good. I think the revised code will be definitely easier to understand and to navigate. And so I think that's an improvement for sure and will be, should be well received by the users, I think. I have a general question too, David, regarding some of the changes which are more substantive rather than just organizational. It appears that we're relying on the experience or on what we've done with the Metro Plan. And I'm just curious if we have enough experience with that plan to feel comfortable with some of these things that we started in Metro and we're now proposing to apply on a more citywide basis.
Yeah. That's a great question. I mean, I I think part of the answer is is yes and part of the answer is no. I know that we were afforded a little bit more time and ability to meet in person back when we did Metro, but we're also testing out a lot of new things. And so we had quite a few sessions where we met with specific developers and builders to kind of test out some of the the concepts that we had to make sure that they they worked as part of that. So we went through a lot of those conversations. But I think since we've adopted the code, we've had we've had limited development applications, but of the development applications that have come through, we haven't seen any issues or concerns with the standards per se, that that we haven't either adjusted as part of. We actually did an early adjustment right after Metro. And and even as part of this, I, you know, I can almost assure you that, you know, probably within six months, we'll find something that, you know, that we didn't quite get right. And, you know, based on some some process and and we'll be coming in and doing some minor amendments again to kind of adjust it. But so I, you know, I think that, you know, in large measure, we've we've had a long history of of this, not only with Metro, but we had Evergreen Way Plan, we had the Broadway Mixed Use Plan. So a lot of these concepts and for design standards have come in. And I think that we have a pattern that we can do. And unfortunately, I think what we did is we we added the Evergreen Way Plan and those standards in one chapter. And then we did the Broadway in a different chapter, and they're almost the same, but not quite exactly the same. And that's where it's really caused a lot of challenges with implementation, which we're hoping that this will address.
Good answer, great, thank you.
Anyone else last call, commissioners, questions, comments? With that, let's go ahead and move into any public comments. Kathy, are you able to tell how many public participants we have tonight?
We have seventeen tonight.
Okay, well, I'm not sure all of you are wanting to address the commission. But one thing I was, we're going to try something a little bit differently here. In the past, we've called through every phone number that that appears and you kind of waited for a minute to see if we hear anything. Tonight, let's try this. I believe if if anybody who wants to speak were to unmute your phone, Kathy should be able to tell that your phone call, there's a symbol that will come up that shows that you're unmuted. And Kathy, if you could use that as a signal to then call on a, the last four digits of a phone number. And if you are waiting to speak and you hear the last four digits of your phone number, that would be your opportunity then to to speak. And we'd ask that maybe everyone else mute, re-mute your phone while that person is speaking. And then when they finish, if you are wanting to speak, you could go ahead and unmute your phone again as a signal to Kathy to to call through your phone number. So let's see if we can get that to work. Does that sound doable, Kathy, from your end?
Yeah, we've already got people unmuting, so that sounds great. The other thing I wanted to remind everyone about is that please provide your name and address for our record. And when you're done testifying, please remember to mute your mic.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kathy.
Oh, the first one I have is Greg Benson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thanks. I'm not a planner and I don't understand David's initial comments on Norton Grand Transit Overlay and the height changes. But I think that's fine. I only know that what I hope our neighborhood will look like in a few years. In a couple of days, we'll have a more targeted discussion of Norton Grand. So I appreciate Andrea T. and David setting that up. It's, in my opinion, the Everett Planning Department just doesn't adequately inform those most affected by rethink zoning. You know, and that's the neighborhood homeowners and the people that live here. The the current process is for us to get information is for a motivated person just continuously scour the planning pages for new new information, maybe use the that interactive map, which is kind of cool, but a little confusing. And then send emails to people that they think are interested. That's really seems the opposite of a transparent process and leaves most folks unaware of changes that will probably adversely affect their home values and quality of life. And citizens are regularly left out of imminent zoning decisions. And I just remembered, I didn't give my name and address. It's Greg Benson and Thirty-third and Norton, sorry about that. So an excellent example of being left out as a Norton playfield. The neighbors made it very clear that this is not going to work out for them. It's going to adversely affect the their quality of life when you have scores of new families and and then the ensuing children. We live across the street from a pretty small housing, Hope Development, and probably ten kids, and they're just out at all hours of the the night, and it's super noisy. I can't multiply that by ten probably, and that's what they're going to have in what was once a really peaceful area. So Thirty-third and Nassau, that's just south of the Pacific campus of Providence. There's there's an area that's that's zoned, it's going to be upzoned to a UR four. And so what's the purpose of this rezoning? I sent David and and some other people an email. And Karen Stewart of the Planning Department got back to me, the great responses to my questions. And they didn't, all that she can say is that a developer or the people that own the property didn't ask for it. So so why is this being expanded? I thought that everything south of Thirty-third wasn't going to be involved in Metro Everett. So and so, you know, we're told that views aren't a right, but why should a developer be able to take an existing view and put it in their new taller building? So it seems like we just keep rehashing Metro Everett. So things that were agreed to in the package, we thought like roof heights and density seemed to have been forgotten. Our goal all along was to maintain single-family housing, not high density, not medium density. It's going back to the overlay, the Norton Grand Historic Overlay, which we understand is just a guideline. But, I mean, they they put it together and it seemed to make sense, and that's kind of why we bought the houses here that we did. So the and that overlay just isn't a large area in Everett. Another Potello Place or Grand Avenue Apartments would easily replace all the additional housing capacity that you can get in the overlay. And I'm looking at the stuff that's around along Rucker and Pacific. And it I don't understand why we seem to be in the crosshairs. So a generation ago, you know, they came up with the overlays. So in the early nineties, and the city just doesn't seem capable of providing a coherent plan to zoning. What's the long-term vision for housing in Everett? And why is so much time spent on a small area? The proposed zoning seems incredibly complicated, geared towards smaller developments. Couldn't the city provide incentives for large, say, two-hundred-plus units closer to downtown core? A few of these would go a long way to solve the upcoming housing crisis. I think that the best thing Everett could do is to develop an economic plan to bring well-paying jobs to the downtown core. And those jobs will motivate developers to build big in the downtown area. And I guess my final thought is that Everett just got absolutely nailed with with budget cuts and loss of staff and people retiring. When David retires and we have David Tyler retired, I guess, and Alan Griffin, what's who's going to be left that really remembers the past decisions and concerns? I just, I I think that we're going to get railroaded and the and the neighbors that live in these and well, specifically in the Norton Grand Overlay are just going to be really screwed on the whole thing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathy, you want to call the next participant? If someone wants to unmute, Kathy can call, call your name or number?
I do have a couple numbers here that are unmuted. I don't know if they're related to a guest, but I have one with extension six nine eight four.
If you're not, if your phone number is six nine eight four and you're wishing to speak, go ahead, and this would be your opportunity.
Sorry, I'm six nine eight four, but I am on mute. I don't know why it's showing up as not mute.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Then let's move on to the next one, then go ahead, Kathy.
The other one I have might be the same situation. It's extension nine eight three nine.
That's me.
Did you wish to? I'm sorry, did you wish to speak, ma'am?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead and introduce, if you could, put your, put your name and address on the record before your comments, please.
Sure, my name is Jean Sade Hewitt, and I live in the Norton Grand Historic Neighborhood on Thirty-fourth and Grand. And first of all, I'd like to ask for forbearance for my attitude this evening because I can't believe I'm spending another summer stressing out over rezoning in my neighborhood. I'd like to ask you to reinstate the proposed rezoning of Norton Grand Overlay, North Thirty-fifth Street. It was map twenty-six. This was a rezone we've asked for for years. And it appears it would help us preserve our historic homes and still allow for multifamily development, allow for a better alignment and uses, more in character with the neighborhood, and perhaps give us better setbacks and give us a buffer zone against the unlimited density and height along the Rucker Grand, Rucker and Nassau Avenue. Because now there's little or no building modulation across the alley from historic homes until it looks like fifty feet, according to the Planning Department. So imagine my surprise on June third when the map disappeared from the Planning Department website with no notice. And when our neighborhood chair, Andrea Tucker, asked about the missing map, she was told this change, it was a change that no one wanted. And this could be further from the truth. I'm asking for myself and for my group of neighbors that the Planning Department reinstates and proposed R-two single-family zoning for our overlay. There are dozens of areas, you have packets of rezoning changes that are being proposed in the rethink zoning plan. How could our neighborhood rezone be beyond that scope? In addition, I'm concerned that with the consolidation of the code, then Norton Grand will be upzoned with greater densities and greater lot coverage and additional uses than what stands right now. We fought against these changes two years ago in Metro Everett, and we don't want them now. So we're asking you to reconsider looking at our neighborhood and reinstate the single-family designation. And also, to Greg's point, there's another step into our neighborhood, the upzone on Thirty-third and Nassau. These are properties in a residential neighborhood, abutting single-family zones and a historic overlay. Metro Everett already encroached into our neighborhood upzoning Nassau in twenty-eighteen. And I'm asking you to stop this additional upzoning and keep these properties as R-three. And thirdly, I'm concerned about the change in notice and approvals for development in historic overlays. Notifying neighbors about changes in historic properties is a crucial step in helping preservation. And, you know, there's many more issues, including the wholesale upzoning of the Norton Ball Field and its effect on our neighborhood. But I think my three minutes are probably up. So please reinstate the proposed R-two single-family zoning for the R-three properties in the Norton Grand Historic Overlay. Stop the upzoning on Nassau and Thirty-third. And give us some more time to reach out to our neighbors and get them involved in understanding these proposed changes. It's very difficult with the COVID pandemic to be able to get people together, even to do door knocking to get people to to attend these meetings. So I hope you consider my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, you want to go and call the next?
Yeah, Ismail Mohammed. Hi, this is Ismail Mohammed, thirty-one oh-two Rucker Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. I wanted to go back to the David's presentation where it says there is some clarification on tandem parking for the off-street parking. I just wanted to know what are those clarifications or changes that's going to happen to the tandem parking? The other question I have is regarding the microunits. It seems like there is an, a number has been chosen for the minimum development of microunits to be twenty-four. There is also a size restriction for the microunits. So I'm not sure what were the reasons for choosing a twenty-four unit to be a minimum for a microunit? And how, in the past, being microunit as part of our code system, how much activity we have seen in that area to take this action to restrict or put a put a minimum, minimum quantity of or number of units to be on for twenty-four for microunits development? The third question I have is, I asked this last time, that are there any restrictions or use of manufactured homes to be established or put on the on the lots? There were, David mentioned that there are some changes which are being considered in the rethink zoning. I wanted to know where those are. to know where those are mentioned so we can further, I can review those. That's all for now. Thank you. Excellent work, David and the team, I would say.
Our next guest is David Koenig.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Dave Koenig, thirteen oh two Madrona Avenue in Everett. Um, I wanted to thank staff first for their efforts and for the change in the base elevation, um, based on the comments earlier. Also, happy to hear that you are going to be, um, giving notice to property owners that who are being affected by these changes, uh, on the rethink zoning. I think that's really important that, uh, property owners are notified. And then third and last is anywhere you're proposing on reducing, um, the public notice, as was mentioned earlier on historic overlay, I think this is the wrong time to be doing that. And I don't think there's a, a good motivation for doing that. I think, uh, public notice, uh, that's in the code, um, allows people to know what's going on to their neighborhood, um, by getting those notices. Uh, neighbors often have information that the planners don't have or the developer about things. Uh, I've seen people make, you know, provide comments and, and, and then the person who's proposing the project, it actually becomes a better project based on neighborhood input. So I would, um, I think any place that, under this rethink zoning where you're talking about reducing the notice to the public, um, should be eliminated. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any others that have unmuted themselves. Is there anybody else?
If there's anyone else from, from the public who was wishing to address the commission tonight, um, now would be your opportunity. Go ahead and unmute your phone and just go ahead and introduce yourself and get started that way.
Okay, the first one is Brian Arkington.
Hi, uh, uh, I'm, uh, looking over the plan. Um, I think if you're, uh, if the idea is to move off, uh, or to postpone the more serious, uh, discussion about, um, zoning in, until the next year, which I think makes sense given the issues with, um, proceeding public comment and organizing during this period, it, it makes sense to me to, um, uh, stay with the status quo fully and not to rush into making, um, any decisions for, um, any specific neighborhood, um, just with the understanding that all the other neighborhoods have in the city, um, that this will be picked up, um, in the new year when, um, uh, hopefully we'll be able to do a better job of, uh, rallying the respective communities and, and, providing the thorough input necessary. Um, but until then, um, it makes sense not to, uh, rush on this and to implement, um, any major changes, uh, in any, uh, uh, specific area. Uh, thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry, my address is, uh, four nine zero eight Rucker Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next guest is Andrea Tucker.
Hi there. Um, I'm on my computer, so if you hear a dog bark, I'm sorry, I'll mute it real quick. But, um, it's Andrea Tucker, Thirty Three Thirty, Wetmore Avenue. And, um, I just want to echo, well, now Brian, Greg, Jean, um, we are, I know this has been going on for quite a while, and David and I have had that conversation. But I do have neighbors, as chair of the neighborhood, I have neighbors frequently asking me, what's going on? They don't understand. Um, we are going to have a meeting, um, on Thursday, but we're moving a little bit fast for being in a pandemic. People are homeschooling their children. People are losing jobs. And it just seems like, it's not a rush, but it is a rush. So, um, that's all I have to say. I just want to, I just want our neighbors to be able to, to understand the changes. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. I have another one named unknown user. I'll leave your name and address for the record, please.
Not sure, but it might be me. Uh, this is Marco Magai from Thirty Three Oh One Grand Avenue. And I just wanted to concur with the, um, having the, you know, rezoning back to single family from MFL, as Jeanie had mentioned as well, especially in these times, it's kind of hard to, to update on these things. So I was glad to be on here and, and listen to these updates, um, especially when I keep the, um, history that this neighborhood has, and, and we do love it here. And thanks for your work as well.
Thank you. Any, anyone else on the line that you can see Kathy wanting to speak?
I think that's it.
Okay, I guess I'll put out one more call. Is anyone from the public wishing to address the commission with any, um, comments? That would be your last opportunity to do that today. Okay, with that, let me ask if there's any other business. David or any other commissioners have any other business, any other parting, uh, questions or comments from the commission? Is that, uh, Mr. Beck? Is that, did I see your hand raised?
You do. I was just waiting for you to recognize me. Thank you. So I just, uh, since we do have quite a few of my neighbors on the line, I just want to encourage folks to really pay attention to Everett Washington's rethink zoning webpage. I have noticed, I, cause I watch it periodically every three day, three days. David and his staff are extremely good at keeping that updated. And on each of those pages is an email address for everyone to ask questions. So there is a really good communication line that has been developed. I understand that some folks might be challenged with internet connectivity, and if they are, that's something that we need to address in tomorrow's meeting. But I would encourage everyone to really pay attention. Um, David does a really good job of keeping that webpage updated with any changes. And I myself have actually found the summary to these changes, the summary documents on the document page, very helpful in understanding what is exactly going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Beck. Uh, any other commissioners wanting to, wanting to comment?
I have a question. Um, this is Commissioner Lavra.
Go ahead.
Um, so I came in late, technical difficulties, I'm sorry. So what is this meeting tomorrow or Thursday that is being discussed?
Um, so th- this is David Selheim. Uh, so the meeting, uh, uh, on Thursday I'm having with the neighborhood group. So this is not for planning commission members. And so, uh, if there are planning commission members, particularly if there's a quorum of planning commission members, I need to know about that in advance. Uh, uh, three members can attend, uh, that meeting, but, uh, but otherwise it's another virtual online meeting that we're having.
Okay, thank you. Well, I live in that neighborhood, but I will not be attending. Thank you.
And, you know, while we're a little bit on the subject, I, I do want to clarify some things because, uh, this, it's kind of like, um, it's very familiar with, uh, things that happened several years ago where misinformation spreads fast. So the area in the Norton Grand Neighborhood that we took off the land use changes is because it currently is zoned multifamily and is proposed to stay multifamily. It has not been zoned single family for probably thirty years. So there is no changes whatsoever. It is currently zoned multifamily, has ability to build multifamily units up to thirty-eight feet tall, and under what we have drafted, it is the same thing. So information that's being passed along that's saying we, we are not, we're rezoning it to multifamily is not true. It is currently zoned multifamily and would remain multifamily. I think most of the planning commission members understand that, but a lot of members of the public don't. So we took that off the table because we do not want to do a major downzone in that neighborhood at this time.
David, thank you for that comment too. And I thought maybe this might be an opportunity to just to clarify, because again, it's my understanding from our past meetings and what, um, staff has been presenting is that one of the specific objectives, given the, the current, um, you know, the COVID situation and, and some of the difficulties in meeting, has been to specifically, uh, you know, not include, uh, changes or amendments to the code that will address single-family zones, which would include the Norton Grand, but also any other, uh, neighborhood, residential neighborhood, um, or single-family residential neighborhood in the city. So is that, is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. But again, most of the Norton Grand Neighborhood is zoned currently for multifamily uses, not for single family, even though there may be a pattern there. It's been zoned for over thirty years for multifamily. So there's, there's not a change. The design standards remain the same, uh, in there, and the heights remain the same, and the uses would remain the same as what's currently allowed, uh, within that area. Uh, I think the biggest change in the single-family neighborhoods, and that's why I kind of wanted to go back through those accessory buildings and those accessory, um, dwelling units, the sizes of anything that's probably the more significant thing that, that's happening in the single-family zones at this time. And, and all those summary documents for every one of those chapters are the clip note versions. And, and, uh, that's where people should, uh, pay attention to grab a chapter that you're interested in and go through that, because we're disclosing everything that we see as a potential change, uh, in, in those summary documents rather than people and laypeople having to, uh, read through all the code language. Uh, we're, we're disclosing everything in those summary documents.
Well, great, David. Really appreciate, uh, staff's work tonight. Thank you, um, commissioners and, and members of the public for attending. Uh, I think unless there's anything else here, um, let me just double check. Uh, am I seeing one more question, Commissioner Beck?
You are, because I just want to mention if there's any remaining neighbors on the, uh, on the meeting, that, uh, a downzone is, um, something that if you really are interested in gaining a downzone for this particular area, that's something to take up with the city council. There are no changes being proposed here in terms of, um, downgrading the land use. But if this is a concern of yours, you're always welcome to go and appear at public comments with city council and let them know your desires.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, David.
Well, yeah, and just to add to that, I think that, that, uh, that area and what happens in some of those neighborhoods would be part of the package that we'd be looking at, uh, for single-family and housing types in the, in the next year. So I think those are, those are things that are, uh, potentially part of the work plan that's, uh, being scheduled out, out in the next year.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Oh, go ahead. Yeah.
Tisdal here. Uh, the, uh, David, the red lines that, uh, Michael asked about, is that going to go out to everybody or?
Uh, so who's this asking?
This is, this is Tisdal. Earlier on, Michael asked about the redline documents. I was just, are, are we all going to get that or?
Yes, yeah. So I, uh, had intended to, for those chapters that you've been presented with before, I'll, uh, I'll get that out to you so you can see that. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Tisdal, thank you. Welcome. Okay, uh, I guess with that then, uh, thank you, everybody, and we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you.